Never seen a car smoke worth it going up Harrison. It was like an older British I think. It passed me, but the smoke was in the air all the way to the highway. And then at the top of the driveway, you couldn't even see the car.
Perfect.
Down the ground.
If you see it, it's for decent size.
Give him a favor.
Probably has some defective equipment, huh? Okay, I think I used to have a car that I had to check the oil before I checked the gas. There wasn't anything like that.
Get that all fixed up. Shoulder.
All right, let's call the meeting to order. Leave your eyes for the plen to be legit.
I plead allegiance to the flag of freedom of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. I was from the public. We had on the agenda, we have Chief Didion of the Raymond Fire Department, but they are out on a call, so they may get here before we finish, but they're not here just yet. So we have John Shaker.
Thank you, Reverend Mayor. Councilmember, good evening. I wanted to, I know on the agenda, I had some discussion of possible amendments to the flight policy, which was this past Joss meeting. And I would just like to voice that I am not in favor of any amendment to it. I know if some discussion may have taken place about doing it kind of a mirror of what the city of Raymond is doing with flags that are of a presidential declaration. And I would simply caution that, just like before, with open enough to any group, it's either all or none. And I would just like to remind everyone that presidential declarations, there are annual recognitions of presidential declaration for 58 individual days for different groups, 19 weeks for different groups and months. There are 52 groups that are designated by presidential declaration, special recognition for the month. So I don't think, if you're willing to go that route, I would say just like any other, it's either all or none. You can't discriminate against one group of the presidential declaration and simply pick and choose those which you may personally want. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Bonjour.
Once again, I'd like to speak about having the audio video recordings as part of the council minutes. This time when I checked at 4:45, the minutes weren't up, although I'd seen them before. I mean, the last meeting, you know, we had so much discussion. And of course, in the minutes, if that's all you need, the minutes that so and so spoke, they were of this opinion. But in order to understand and get the flavor of it, you need to be able to listen to the meeting. So I would urge the council to put that on a huge agenda topic to see if we can put that back on the city website. On the issue of the pride discussion last time, Patricia mentioned that some organizations recognize different months. I know TRL, I tried to get TRL to send me which months they recognize. I know it's Black History, Women's History, Pride, I think there's Asian and Pacific Islanders or something. But there's, but there's a number of different, you know, of different things recognized. And I think the discussion last time was mainly about the flag policy and the city flag polls. I think you should back up a little bit and see, are you opposed to recognizing the pride month? You know, if you recognize it, but without putting it next to the American flag, which seems offensive to people. I think that would be a way to go. There's been some discussion about maybe having a flag poll that race through a walkway. Then we could put whatever we want up there. You know, we could put a Chinook flag or the pride flag or if we want to recognize some of these other things like Black History, Women's History, good. The final thing is, I understand there's a couple of complaints about some of the council comments relative to the reader board. Again, I didn't, I could have listened to Craig actually posted the meeting, but I didn't go back and listen to it. What was said is nothing new that hasn't been complained about for years by a lot of people. Some people are just flat out embarrassed when they see some of the things on that. So it's not anything out of the ordinary. I think any public politician can speak their personal opinion when they choose to. Oh, one other thing, I talked to Dennis last time on some stuff on moving on Harrison. And the next day, they did the best job ever.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to item four, approval of the agenda and consent agenda of the entertain a motion, oh, in the minutes from June 26, 2023. I would entertain a motion to that effect. Someone, and a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
May I add an agenda topic to this meeting? I agree, it can be voted on, yeah. Okay, I'm, I would like to, to discuss the benefits of having the recording on the, on the website.
Okay, okay. Let's put that on, right after the flag, make it a 6A. Is everyone in agreement with that? Sure. Okay, so item 6A, recording meeting discussion. All right, so would whoever made the motion like to amend it to include item 6A?
I would like to amend the motion to include a discussion about posting a recording of the meeting minutes on the website.
And whoever made the second, you're willing to amend that?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion carries. So we're gonna move on to correspondence. We have an item from Marvin Davidson says, I wish to offer my sincere apology to Mayor June Stroh and to the rest of the city council for my overly excited actions at the city council meeting. I left an email the next day after the meeting and also called and left a message on Mayor Stroh's voicemail, but she mentioned the email didn't go through. Again, my sincerest apology to everyone, Marvin Davidson. Okay, flag policy discussion. And here we have our current policy, which is just the state and national mandated flags. So Patricia, you wanted to start this discussion, so you asked for it to be on the agenda. I'll let you go ahead and start.
Okay, great. I, I looked around a lot on the internet about different flag policies and every city seems to be a little bit different. Unless they just do the, the, the standard. And on the Western Washington University website, there is a list of recognitions. And they are, they are not political, they are not religious. They are acknowledging the history of, of groups, the Black History, Women's History, Asian Pacific, American Heritage. These are all heritage recognition. LGBTQ month, Latin and Hispanic American, American Indian, and of course, December is permanent, the POW MIA. And I, I just don't see any, any problem with it. There's certainly nothing political about them unless your political party is Indians or, or, or women. She's got to grab that. And I, I am fully in favor of, of these, I think there's six of them, six or seven, that are, that are flown widely on government offices all around the country. Just these six.
How can you discriminate and say that's all the six we're gonna do? How, does someone will come and say, how can you get on this list? And then they'll say, well, you discriminate against us because we're not on that list and you don't allow us to be on that.
It's a heritage, it's a heritage issue. It's not a political issue, it's not a retail issue, it's not a religious issue. It's, it's recognizing the struggles that certain groups have endured as a result of mistreatment.
I'm good.
And that has nothing to do with the ice cream month or the blueberry month or the, or the margarita week or whatever. It's, these, these are serious, serious heritage issues, I think.
Anyone else?
Well, after the last meeting, even before I got home, I realized how important it is to a lot of people that the American flag stand on its own. And, and I, you know, I appreciate that and I agree with that. But I would like to see a flag poll, a commemorative flag poll in the city of South Bend. And I don't see why we can't, you know, pick the ones that we want to do. I'd like, I'd like to see the Chinook flag fly all the time. And I, I think if it's away from, from the city building, out over the water, it may not upset as many people. And I, and I do understand, when I drove to Raymond, they had hung the pride flag right below touching the American flag without, you know, the space in between. And they, it was windy and they were wrapped together. And I thought about the people that, you know, that would upset, you know. So I don't see a problem with picking something, even if they're just in our area, you know, things about, about our area and having a flag poll at the Race for All Park.
These are all people from our area. They are blacks, women, Asian Pacific, LGBTQ, Latin and Hispanic American, and American Heritage. They're, they're all in our community.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing. I don't think anyone is disagreeing with that. The, the problem is you're gonna run into a discrimination issue when someone else comes. It's, that's what the Supreme Court said, if you allow one, you allow all. In the case of Sherwood versus Boston, they got in trouble because they allowed some and not others. And that's where they ran into an issue.
Yeah, I read that and there's.
The, the state building flies the pride flag. I mean, how does the state not have to fly everything that everybody wants? And cities have lists of flags that they allow. And it changes probably with different councils, but.
They, there are cities that do have lists and I'm not disagreeing with that. But they're gonna be challenged at some point by someone who wants to be on that approved flag list. And they will get a discrimination suit filed against them because someone's gonna say, how do we get on that approved list? And they say, no. I guess my, my stance is it's all or none. We either allow everything or we don't allow any. That's, that's, that's how I feel. But, you know, you guys have the vote, I don't. And so Wyatt or Bunny, you guys have.
Well, that's, that's the way I feel too. And I, and I think that, you know, maybe, maybe this shouldn't, especially where we stand right now, be voted on really quickly. I think maybe we need to look into this a little bit more about the cities that are flying a few flags or whatever. And because that's my fear, is that if you open it up and someone comes in and we absolutely don't want it on there, and they say, well, you're gonna put it on there because you're flying those flags, I have a right just as much as they do, then where does that put us? You know, are we gonna have a lawsuit against the city of South Bend? That's our responsibility as council members to at least vet this, vet this thing and look through it and understand it before we ever make a vote of it.
Many of the cities that, that do have a flag policy don't allow the general public to bring a suggestion for a flag up that has to be presented by a member of the city council.
The council, that's the way the proclamation is too. It's the same, the same thing with the proclamation is, you know, that was the worry there.
You know, I agree with just running, just running the state flag, not only the American flag because, let's say you open yourself up for a lawsuit. None of us here have been against the pride flag. In fact, when they've done their march, our police department has supported them all the way from Raymond to here, when they've done their walks and everything else. It's not like we're trying to exclude anybody. But the second we open up to one organization, we open it to all. That means every church in town is, has the authority to be able to ask for a flag poll. That means the Boy Scouts of America has the right to fly a flag. That means our fire department has the right to fly a flag. That means everybody has the right to fly a flag with no, with no discrimination. So until, until the government enacts something and says that we have to have a poll for that particular purpose, then I say that's when it happens. Until then, we've done some bullet and keepers out for being in a lawsuit.
What about the Chinook flag?
Till the state says so.
That would be a discriminating issue too, because it's a third party flag.
Right now, it just says that we have to fly the American flag.
And the POW flag is mandated by.
And their POW flag is at a veteran's warrant. So we've done due diligence.
Okay, so it's gonna be two to two again, it looks like to me. And so I would suggest that we think about it some more and bring it back in another month or two and look at it again after everyone goes home and does some research and we have a, we have a full council.
Research team wanna see.
I have plenty too. I've looked at it, probably as much as you do. But I, I, I just think we need to just table this for a while. That's what I would prefer, but if you guys want to do something different, that's fine.
I'd rather table it than just squash it.
Yeah, and I think that's fine. Let's just put it on for a month or two and then take a look at it again and think. Is it? Oh, good.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, all right. So unless someone wants to throw this forward, let's just put it off for another month or two and look at it again at a later date. Is everyone okay? Yeah?
Yes.
All right, okay. So recording the meeting discussion, 6A.
I think that would be a good idea because I, I do minutes and I try to, I try to capture as much of the conversation as possible because I, I realize that a lot of people who might be interested in what's going on in the meeting can't be there. And, and mine are quite extensive if anybody's ever read my minutes. And, and rather than that, if you have a, a recording that, that people can listen to, I don't see any harm in that.
The big thing, I think, was the public records requests that could come from that. Then we have to provide recordings, which is not easily done, takes time, and it's not mandatory, and that's why we got away from it.
We got it.
It's discoverable or whatever.
We, and we got an opinion from MRSC, which, you know, School Research Center, which is lawyers and stuff that put in there, that isn't required immediately. And that's why then we have gotten away from it. So, but it does create another, very much thing could create a huge public disclosure down the line.
Well, it's almost like we're trying to hide something.
No, the minutes are the official record of the meeting. And the minutes that have been in the past are action minutes, so they're not word for word. That's not, it, they don't have to be. But, you know, ultimately, not my decision.
That was the main reason to go away from it, was just so that we didn't have to have a public records request and do a video thing that goes out.
I think the surprise with that, I, I, I think, I would just like to, for people to have this much information. And of course, they're always welcome to come here if they want to know what's going on.
They're welcome to join soon too. I mean, we've got more options than we've ever had.
That, that, that is true. That being said, I personally still like to see it posted.
I don't know. We can't see what you're doing there, Craig.
I, I can wait till the public comment on agenda items. It's, it's the RCW recording on, or online streaming by Engagency Encouraged.
Encouraged, yeah, that's not mandatory. So, yeah. Encouraged is a different word. Okay, so what are we doing here? Are we gonna continue the discussion? Are we gonna move forward?
Okay, well, all right. I, I would like to make a motion to have them, to have them posted for anybody to, to access.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed? It's two to two. Okay, we're gonna leave it as it is for now. We can bring it up again when there's a full council. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. All right, department head reports, please Chief Stegall.
The guys have been busy working on, we have a couple of sex offense cases and they wrapped up a, a few felony level cases. We spent a lot of time in the last two weeks going to court, actually the last month, going to court and testifying on felony cases. And it seems like it's happening more and more here in the last couple of months that our guys are being called in to testify. So I don't know if that's, you know, a, a good thing or what, but the prosecutor's office is going after some of these cases. So there's, there's been some over 10 costs there, but that's part of doing, that's part of business. Other than that, I, I don't have anything.
Okay, supervisors out?
No, I don't have anything.
Your treasures all.
I'm just gonna bring up, the, the office will be closed for a few hours tomorrow. From like about 9:30 to 1:00, we're doing an active shooter training over at Raymond's base department. We tried this a couple of months ago, I think I had mentioned it. But when we got there for training, that was when they actually had that active shooter call and we were beginning to. So our training was canceled and we came back to the office. So we're trying to reschedule it and fingers crossed with Sanjins again that there's another call. So the office will be closed just for a few hours tomorrow. And then we'll be back in a minute.
Okay, Fire Chief McGee.
We just had one grass fire over in Fourth. Other than that, it was pretty quiet, which is amazing. And we got a structure fire before that, but it all went good. Could have been a lot worse than what it was, so.
The heater fire.
Oh, yeah, the heater fire towards that Bear Street.
Yeah.
And guys doing a good job, so I appreciate that.
Great, thank you. All right, so the only thing I have is kudos to the guys for putting up the playground to put in at Chinook Park, that's almost done. So that was a little more laborious, I think, to me envisioned.
But yeah, it'd be nice for the kids down there, like Ikea.
All right, so any public comments about current agenda items? Yes?
First, the flag thing. The concern about if you do one, you're gonna be hit with all this discrimination and stuff is that what happens to all the cities that are currently doing that and other organizations? What's their attitude? Have they been hit with problems? Is Meniscal Research have information on how many lawsuits have been filed against different cities for flying one flag and not letting every, you know, every other person that wants to do something put up? I mean, it seems like it's probably not as scary as it's been made up to that if you do this, you know, you're gonna be hit with discrimination suits. Perhaps, but I think there's information out there probably on that. On the recording of the meetings, I'm not sure what the problem would be with public records requests. I mean, my more recent experiences with TRL. And TRL has gotten to more transparency than they have before. Now they record their videos and audios of their committee meetings plus the regular work meetings. And in my time there, I never heard that there was a concern about a public records request. It's on the website, just, you know, if they can't record it themselves because it's there already, then the entity just make them a CD and send it to them. It's, it doesn't seem like a big job to me. And certainly is, is everybody a better idea. I mean, sometimes when I was on the council, you know, I usually didn't complain about the way the minutes were said, probably because people were unhappy with the idea. But sometimes it was important to have exactly what was said. And the only way that you can get exactly what was said is to listen to the thing. If there's nothing to listen to, there's no way to go back. So I still think, I don't see, and it sounded like Craig just said that Meniscal Research encouraged. So apparently, maybe check with them if there's a big public records request for having it.
I think that was RCW, he misquoted.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's encouraged, yeah.
And they, and then he said there was a public records problem?
They said that their recommendation was that we didn't need to report anymore.
You didn't need to, but was there a problem that you did, did they say?
I mean, it can cause a big public records request, yeah.
It's already there, I mean, it's not, how hard is it to send them?
Public records requests are a lot harder actually. But it's, yeah, it's not up to me, so. Oh, you're right, a person wouldn't have to request it if it was there. Now that was kind of.
Okay, yes.
I'd like to address the, the flag issue. You had mentioned you're limiting it to heritage definition. I think you mentioned Asian, Central American heritage. I didn't hear you mention German American, Irish American, Jewish American heritage month. There are others, so even your attempt to limit there as a, you know, leak here for, you know, some there and there. And as far as recording, the other thing is, for last week's minutes and this, this week's agenda and, and the packet, we're not available all month. They were only posted on Facebook. I don't have Facebook. So I don't think it should be a requirement that every citizen could have Facebook and oversee, see the agenda of that. So I would like to go back to having it posted online on the city.
No, this month, it says not because you do not have the website person right now. And I can, I do not know how to. I tried to post it and did not post.
You followed through.
So there, where I'm trying to get it rectified, but this week's was not. But if anybody called, I did talk him, I could email them the packet or just, you know, that it was on Facebook, but that I could email it to them if they needed it. So I never heard anything beyond that, but yeah, it is not this week because I was unable to get it. I tried and I was unable to get it. I got no direction on how to do our website, so it's, I'm trying to figure it out, trying to get some outside help, trying to actually hire somebody new. But right now, I'm not able to.
I was just going by receiving from you the.
Okay, in the meantime, are we posting on the front door or?
The agenda is posted on the front, yes. The agenda is posted on the front door. You can come in, I will give you one if you call. I can email it to you, but I'm trying, I'm, we're trying to work through this little glitch, but right now we do not have a website person.
We have more than this one public post. We got, we got.
Yeah.
We've got a couple of issues.
But I'm, you know, I will happily send it out to anybody if they call, wanna come pick it up, but.
So you have copies of what, what else?
I can give you a copy of them, yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. So let's.
Craig.
Craig.
Oh, sorry, Craig, I was looking in the room.
Yeah, I understand. First of all, just to get off, it's RCW 42 dot three zero dot two two zero. Recording or online streaming by agency encouraged. It mentions audio or video recording or to provide an online streaming option for all regular meetings of its governing body and make recordings available for a minimum of six months. It does not alter local government record-keeping requirements under chapter 42 dot five six RCW. Online streaming is different. Would it be possible to have you guys set up like a YouTube streaming account so that the meetings can not only go at a Zoom meeting, but could be streamed to anybody with internet access to watch via YouTube, where it could also be recorded and stored? Just out there, putting it out there. On the pride flag issue. This seems to be getting swamped in which flag, whose flag. To me, it's more of a, what are you as a council and governing body there to represent? Cause right now, I see governing from fear. There's a fear of some potential maybe lawsuit that might come up versus the actual act of showing and encouraging your citizens, all of them in your town. I don't see why you can't create an ordinance that says, here's our accepted flags that we will fly on our third, a, a new flag pole separated from the American flag. That's fine. Put it out over, out by the river. And put restrictions. If you're listed by the Southern Poverty Law Center as a hate group, we won't fly your flag. As the council members have said, make it if you want a new flag added to the list. It has to come through one of the council members. You can vote on which ones are there. The fact that there's fifty-two different flags that are approved by things shouldn't be a problem. If you can only fly one flag a month, then you create a list and you've got your flag ready for the next ten years for who's gonna fly that month. You, you put a list, everybody gets your flag, you just have to wait your turn. A lot of these things seem to be getting, and it's more of a case, are you trying to lead by inclusion or exclusion? Is what is coming down to me. Are you trying to make the people, all of the people in town feel welcome? Are you trying to cater to a small group who has a problem with some of those other groups? And I can't be certain, but I believe there were at least some of the speakers who came from an organization that was with a marquee out in front that at one point was reading, "Social justice is only possible through government tyranny." So now, are those the people you're listening to on how you wanna govern our city? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to council comments. Council Quicken.
I just gotta say that the city's done a great job with that playground down there because I know we'll take, put one of those up. That, that'll be a good ton of kids.
Council Corcoran.
It will be a good ton of kids, thank you very much.
Okay, Council Davis?
I'm gonna go look at playground.
And Council Warren. Okay, all right, so do we have future agenda topics? Okay?
We visit whatever we have, right, table?
Yeah, yeah, we'll go that in a month.
We'll put the recording on for next part and then we're gonna wait for a month or so about that.
Right, yeah, yeah. Okay, so, um, Raymond's Guard Department is here with the new ambulance. And so we will adjourn the meeting here. And anyone would like to is welcome to go outside and take a look at the new ambulance, and thank you for coming.
Can I drive it?